Welcome back into the last episode of the Backtesting Session. This was a huge ride and of course we're going to do a recap as soon as possible about it. But now we're going to do quite a long run with the end of the December trading. So we can see that starting from Monday, December 5th, we have the PMIs and starting from after New York Stock Exchange. So let me set it up. Here. Okay. Okay. So this is set up from Monday, December 5th. And let's see with the price action. So now let's open EpicPen. Okay. So we know that it's only after New York Stock Exchange that we have some news. So far what we can see is that price is making new lows. We have a break below these lows and the key level. And we have this retest. This is after our trading time. And with a little bit of a volume, not much. Hopefully we're going into profits. But the volume was good. Now we are finding some resistance. But unless we break above, it's not really something risky. Yeah. So we get into a profit. And we are now slowly approaching the actual data release, which is in like 20 minutes. Okay, this is New York Stock Exchange opening, making a pullback to these previous lows. This can already be our entry. I'm not really a fan of it, but this possibly is an entry. We have the break below these lows, a possible continuation lows. But I would wait for the news before taking any entry because it can go either way. So the news are coming up. And let's see what the numbers are. Showing a little bit of an improvement. So might have a small push down confirming us the bias. As you can see, and we're also now approaching the 10 AM candle. So I don't think I would be able to enter with that. Probably yes, if that was understanding the end of a pullback from New York Stock Exchange opening. But otherwise this entry, which is below this previous lows, would have given us the winning trade that we needed. The ISM PMIs, some are very good, one is quite worse. This one is good, this one is bad. So quite a mixed data. And looks like it brings us some bearish momentum. Let's see now with the next slide. Okay. So okay, so this is the actual 10 AM candle. We saw how strong the momentum was. Okay. Okay, so I got a really, wow, very clutch. Let's see here. Okay. So we got a huge momentum, no real entry. We might have had an entry over here. But that's a quite sketchy one. Let's see if we have a continuation down below these lows. Okay, possible entries would be over here. Okay. One, two, let's sort of 30 pips. Let's see if we have a push. I don't really like this price action, not at all. Price is now breaking, retesting these lows. We might see the continuation up. So yeah, this is for sure an unlucky loss. Over here. So yes. And yeah, there's no entry because it's actually later into after London close. Let's continue with the next day. Okay. So we are on the 6th of December. What do we have? We're done, don't have anything really impacting. We have now these lows here. Now want to see some highs, a possible break and retest. This might be our first trade idea. Price is not trending yet, but looks like it can. And yeah, that's a loss. That's quite a poor loss, it's something that I do. But I mean, if I don't take it and the price continues up, then it's quite a shame. The thing is that it's quite early, but I mean, I don't know. Now we are breaking, retested these lows. This could possibly be an entry sells. But yeah, the volume is not really convincing me. So let's see if now we break below these lows for continuation sells or we move up. Yeah, we broke below. There was no retest anytime soon, so that's enough for me an entry. And yeah, let's see what is actually doing. Coming to a 10 AM candle. Now we are breaking below these lows without any retest, low volume. Yeah, we went on to retest these lows, but whatever I entered, I'm not 100% sure. I see the volume is very, very low. Quite a sketchy, sketchy day. I don't know why it was so slow, but yeah, that's it. Okay, now let's continue with the 7th. The 7th. MBA mortgage, this one, this one, nothing really impacting much. This is New York Open. We have some sort of better PSA. This is after the 8:20 PM Eastern. We might take these buys over here. And hopefully it goes into a win. Now this is one, two, I would love to go at least to this PPL. Okay, that's a win. Very slow and painful win, but still a win. So. And now what do we have for trade ideas? We have a break above these highs, probably these lows. Yeah, break and retest above these highs, for example. As you can see, very pretty straightforward. And it goes into our second win of the day. Very good. And yeah, slowly approaching the 10 AM candle, as we're going to see in the next one. Okay. So we took this trade over here. Now 1, 2, 3, 4, this is a win. We have this PSA for possible continuation buys. And yeah, that will be possible, the entry. Yes, that will be a loss, sort of knew it. But that has to be taken anyway. And yeah, I will not jump into sells. Even though it's looking, it was looking tempting. We are now this PSA and below these lows. I don't know, was there any news? Not really. So yeah, I don't know, maybe some news. We are breaking, retesting above these highs, so it's making sense to take a further buy. Okay, and that's actually a loss. And that's probably the last trade of the day. Only thing is that yeah, we actually. Below these lows, that's a, this retest or this retest would have been absolutely great. And actually a winning trade. Retest of these lows. And that's the end of the session. We saw the retest of these lows would give us further scalp, but that's too late. And okay, let's move on. The next one. The 8th of December. Do we have anything? Jobless claims, which are coming as expected, higher than previous one, but as expected. So let's see the actual impact of the news. Let's see if we are staying above these highs or breaking below. Yeah, I like this candle because it's showing us some momentum in this retest. And let's see, hopefully it will continue. Nope. Okay. Now let's see if we have actual continuation bearish, especially with the retest of these lows. I will not take this retest now because there is no, there's not a break and retest. It's sort of a hand of pullback. And I don't know if that's still valid or whatever. I don't really like it to take it. And yeah, buys would probably be, as you can see, we have this PSA for possible continuation buy. Quite risky because as you can see, the volume is not really that clear. As you can see, yeah, the price action is just. It's just, I don't know why I did this, but yeah, it's just garbage. It's sort of forcing a trade. Then what I would love to see is break above these highs, below these lows. I would take already this loss. And then break above these highs. Everybody, if this one is a possible high risk, I would buy. Which would be 1991. I would need 95.5 to get to profitable one. And we're going to see it in the next one. Yeah, but three losses in a row is not really something that. It's good, let's see, let's see, let's see. And this is the, okay, yeah, the price action was not moving much after that. So now this is the 9th of December. Friday, PPI. Image, major sentiment. PPI is coming higher than expected and higher than previous one. So let's see the actual price section confirm. So far before the news, we have these highs and these lows. Wow, that was really impacting. Because it's higher than expected, but strongly lower than previous one. And the previous one was revised on the upside. So it's actually higher than, higher. So yeah, that might be bearish for gold quite a bit. Because you're showing that inflation is very high. I don't know if I would have entered that high risk, I would sell. Let's see now if we break below these lows. Okay, our buys would be now above these highs. Yeah, this cell I cannot enter over here. You can see that it's not my setup anymore. So now let's see. Over here with this price action, we have these lows. Okay, not really the price action that I want to see. Yes. So let's see in the next slide. That's the AM candle. Now we are breaking below these lows. Possible high risk, I would entry. Yes, this is the only possible high risk I would entry that I can see. This one would be also below these old lows. And now possible buys. It's getting late, but we might have some buys above here. Yes, you can see how that would have been absolutely great. Break and retest, break and retest of this low, of these highs, yada, yada, yada. Okay. So we're now coming into the 12th of December. And do we have anything? Nope, nothing. We had the CPI on the following day. Let's see now. So today the market are giving us something to do or not. We might take some sells over there. Add this retest. Okay, this is still okay, but this is like 20 pips. Yeah, this would be probably a loss. Okay, now we have these highs and these lows. But it's getting late. There's no real entry over here. And I don't think there was even further price action happening. So I think we're going to jump into the CPI day. Which is the 13th of December. CPI, very strong impact. I'm expecting a pam pam, the usual. Yes. So nothing much to say. The CPI is decreasing, as you can see, as we saw here. CPI is decreasing. So that's why the bullish push. Because I'm expecting the weight to be possibly slowing down. Let's see if we have an entry. Okay, very sketchy price action, still spread is crazy. Where do I want to take any entry? I'm not really sure. The only place would be over here. I don't even know if it's going to be a win. Yes. Break and re, down, pullback, break and retest of the last high, lower high. Now let's see if we break above these highs. Okay. Nice retest of these last highs. So that's possible good entry. But I mean, I was still, yeah, possible good entry. High risk, I would. Otherwise, if we have a break and retest of these highs, that's okay. Because also I don't like all these rejections. And but I know that if it breaks above, it will spike up. So any entry over here will probably now be okay. Yeah, okay. That was, I mean, I was betting on the price to continue up. And that's okay to take a loss. Let's see if we break below these lows for possible continuation down. Or I will have to wait for some clear price action. Yeah. I don't know if I would have entered over there. If I would have entered over there, okay. But then I need to enter again, add a further break and retest. Hopefully this time, yeah, this time is a win. So it's still a 2-2. So that's still a profitable setup. Now let's see where the price action, where the testing these same highs and now pushing up. This entry was not predictable, I would say. This is also the end of pullback. And I don't really want to take it. And so now let's see the continuation. Okay. So we took this buy over here. Da, 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 retest of this key level. Let's see if now ever retest of these highs. Okay, for possible continuation up. 1, 2, 3. Ah, yes, that's unlucky, but that's going to be a loss. Because it's, it's like 30 pips, 37 pips. We have further continuation up. Okay, yeah, we have possible entry, add a continuation above these last highs. Okay, and that's, it's going to be a win. Let's go into the next one. We also have the last hour of this day, of the CPI day. So we took, this one was a loss. And we took this buy over here, these buys. Okay, 1, 2, 3. Okay, 3 and 1/2, it's a win. Now are we breaking below these lows, staying below these lows? We have this retest. Now let's, let's see if we have a retest of these lows for the correction down. Yeah, looks like it. This entry over here. Retest of these lows or continuation down, as you can see. Simply have to trust the PSAs. And a continuation down again and again. So very nice end of the day. Remember that gold is mostly a ranging currency asset. So it's likely that it's going to come back down or go back up after some huge move. And let's see now into the 14th of December, which is a Thursday, a Wednesday. Wednesday is actually another full day. We have the, during the day, we don't have much, but we have the interest rate decision at the end of the day. So volume is going to impact quite a lot, quite hard. So over here, we have a break above, still early. Okay, not much volume so far. This might be the possible first trade idea. But I mean, it's already after New York Stock Exchange opening and there's no direction or volume. So yeah, nothing really to take. And let's continue with the actual FMC. Okay, so the FMC over here. So they are raising rates as expected, 0.5 basis, 50 basis points, 0.5 percentage. And they are reviewing the interest rate projections on the lower side. Because they are seeing that, as you can see over here, it is actually decreasing. So the interest rate hike cycle is actually being effective. And let's see as per price action, what it can tell us. I mean, this is huge. I don't know where I could enter without getting busted with my small stop loss. And so yeah, not really knowing. Possibly below these lows. If I was to trade, would take these lows. Now let's see if we have a buy above these highs. Okay. They're very confusing price action. Not really, I was, yeah, I mean, I would say that we probably left it over there after this entry. Also not knowing the comments, I don't know really what is the sentiment. So here, coming into the following day, the 15th, do we have anything? Jobless claims, the retest saves. So let's see. So the retest saves are coming up already and are showing a decrease. Less than expected and less than prior. Jobless claims are good. So let's see, sort of mixed data. Let's see what is the prevailing sentiment and bias for now. We have a retest of these highs. Let's see if the market give us anything. Not so far. Now we're breaking above these highs. Retesting these wicks. Okay, okay, now this is a win. And yeah, we also have some possible break and retest above these highs. 1, 2, 3, 4. Let's see if we simply have continuation up. We have anything later on? Nope. We have this retest over here. Which is a loss. Let's see if we have a market formation for possible sells, below these lows. Nope. Yeah, market is quite ranging. So so far one win and one loss. I'm coming into the 10 AM candle. Breaking above these lows, breaking below these lows. No retest, it just goes without us. That's because I was not, yeah, there wasn't even any retest of these lows. So quite unlucky. Let's see now, I mean, it's not getting late, not taking any further entry. Yeah, we missed this entry. There was no setup, but that's fine. Let's continue with the next day, which is a Friday, the 16th. Okay, do we have anything coming PMIs later on? Okay. Not the strongest volume yet. Yeah, we would have been faked out over here at the start of the new for our candle. So that's, that would be a loss. I'll probably be looking for the retest of these lows compared to these old ones. But we're not after this price action. So the only thing is now, after this spike up with the news, we have these retests that we can take. Most likely also the data was bad. So yes, it was feeding the fundamentals and that's a good spike up. And we also have this break and retest, which is possible continuation up, as you can see. Now we're into the 10 AM candle. Okay. And ta, 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 so we took this one. We got 1, 2, 3 and 1/2. So we got our profits over there. I want to see price breaking above. I'm not really taking these sells, even though they're looking tempting. I don't know if, I know that it will go down, I don't know how far, but I would take this entry even if it's a loss. Yes, because that's a win. And I couldn't know it. So I actually knew that it was coming back up. So I didn't have any, any insight about it. So that's great. And that's the end of the session for me. And so let's continue with the following day. Which is the 19th of December. We are slowly, not really slowing, approaching the end of the month. Nothing happening, nothing happening, nothing, we have a conference on December 21st. GDP, PCE, some more data. And then we have Friday, yeah, we have until Monday off. And then simply a few days until the end of the year. So let's start with the Monday. Okay, New York is opening. Ta, 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 very slow volume. I'm not really trusting that much by the price action. I'm not really trusting that much on the, by the price action. If I had to take an entry, I would take it, this one. I mean, even this one. Yes, it would be a loss. That's because it's not trust, uh, trustful, does worth it, trustworth. Uh, this slow volume, anything can happen. And yeah, we have now, we can readtest of these highs. This can be possible second trade of the day. I don't know if it's going to be a win, yeah, or for the loss. And that's it for the day, yeah, we can see now, yeah. This would have gone into the first profits of the day, the break and readtest of these lows. Yeah, but I, I would have had to, to be mindful enough to stay on the charts and uh. Not let my idea of this low volume take over me, I simply take my setup. 20th of December. Uh, this is before New York. Uh, we don't have much. We have these lows, but this is quite sketchy, this is spike in volatility. Okay, we have this break and readtest on the upside. Okay, which is bringing us some more um. Yeah, it's bring, there's no real entry right here, because even this readtest is not really. I don't know if I would have been able to enter, this end of pullback would have been uh awesome. Uh, over here. Would have been a break and readtest, yeah, that probably entered and take a loss. To be completely honest with you. And price is moving up, we have these last highs, also this week, this is possible entry. And we don't know if it's going to be a win. Okay, yeah, this is going to be a win, and that's okay, that's full transparency. Because this loss would have easily been avoided. I would have been omitted it, uh, but it's good to support it. And um, let's continue with the 10 AM candle of this day. Ta ta ta, okay, this was the spike up, now we are breaking above. These highs. With this entry. Very good. Okay, okay. Now we have these highs, these lows for possible sells. Plus we have this PSA, which is quite important, quite relevant. Uh, but let's see if we break below these lows. Okay. There goes like 30 pips, and then comes back up. Yeah, I don't know if it's going to be a win or not, I will leave it like this. Uh, probably I would have taken it, like, put it at breakeven after this, so probably is a breakeven trade. And yes, so now let's continue with the following day, it's the 21st. We had some news on the 21st, right? Also a confidence later on. Okay, slow volume, let's see if we have some buys above here. I would want to see some lovely price action in a trending way. No, this is not giving me any trending way uh vibes, only this entry, possible entries. Okay, over here, but look at the volume. This is simply hoping that I will take a, a win, yeah. Doesn't make any sense, also we have the consumer confidence. Yes, just leave it as it is, this day, not really, uh, nothing relevant. And now, the 22nd. We have GDP, PCE, jobless claims, so, let's see, should have some more impact. So this probably already the, the release of the news. No yet, okay, so, no, actually yes, because this is 29 over here, so wow, yes. This is already the release of the news. Uh, which is coming improved, improved, higher, improved, so yeah, that's a definitely overall bearish uh bias on gold. Uh, we might, we have this readtest lows, might have possibly been an entry, otherwise taking below these lows. Okay. For example, over here. Which will be um, one, two, three and a half, this will be a win. Yeah, possibly even possible continuation uh below these lows with the multiple readtest. After the 10 AM can, after the new four hour, we have this end of pullback, which is very interesting. Probably if I have a readtest of these lows, that's, that might be the possible continuation lows. Yes, so that's actually a win. Okay, very good understanding of the trending uh, trend coming back, so I don't take the end of pullback, but I understand. When the trend might be resuming. And uh, so yeah, we took the, we took this trade. One, two, three, four, okay, now let's see if we have a readtest of these lower lows. Oh yeah, we should enter aggressively over there. Okay, yes, it will be another win. Quite uh eventful and long, but nonetheless, a good win. One, two, three, four, break and readtest of these lows. I don't know if it's going to be a win or not, I don't know, I don't even know if the next one, uh, this next slide is actually um about it. Twenty, no, 20, 30 is another one. Okay, so now we have the core PC, double good orders and stuff, so let's see. The reaction over here, so the numbers were uh bad, bad, good. This one is, the core PC is slowing down, but as expected. Yeah, it's slowing down. Let's see, the price action, price now is staying below these lows, so we might possibly have a, a sell. I don't really like it to enter this sell without a lower week, so I would wait. Uh, below these lows. Yeah. Actually, this one could have been a high risk, I would buy. Okay. Yes. Let's have this PSA for sells and buys, yeah, this might be a high risk, I would sell already. Which is going to be one, two, three and a half, that's going to be a win. Next set of sells would only be below these lows. Okay. New York Exchange is opening. Let's see if now we have some more direction, we might have already this entry. Not really liking this breakout, but it is what it is. Okay, looks like, yeah, that would be a loss. This is a possible high risk, I would buy. Uh, I don't know if this is a win or. I will need to check it later. But for sure, we have this readtest of these highs looking out. Uh, this one 93.5, 92, so that would be really dependent on. A little bit 92, could be a win, could be a lose, a loss, anyway, we have this win. Uh, let's see the last hour of this session, so we took, now we're going directly into the next one, the 27th. And not much of a report. Okay, this possible sells. Okay, this is one, two, three. Not enough, yeah. Close, but not enough. And then we have a breakout of these highs, but I mean, this is. The old PSA is not really relevant anymore, we might have these buys, if we want to take it, to risk it for the biscuit. Okay, yes, very good. One, two, three, four, so this is a win, let's see if we have a readtest above these highs. No, readtest, yeah, we have a readtest above these highs. With this entry, that we're going to see, yeah, we're going to look at it in the next one. Okay, so we had these buys playing out. These ones. One, two, three, four, breakout above these highs again. There's no real readtest, so there's no, not really an entry, I don't know if there was a, non news, yeah. Or there been difficult to enter over there. Next set of, last set of buys, or there been over there. And that would be a loss. Now, do we have a set of sells? Below these lows, do we want to take a high risk, I would, to end of the, the day, yes, good. Possible end of pullback. Which goes three and a half, which is a, a winning trade. So yeah, quite good, and yes, so that's the end of the day. Let's continue with the next one, which is. The 28th, 28th Wednesday, so we are coming into, yeah, the last three days, nothing, jobless claims and nothing. So, this is New York open. Okay. Price action for sells, now it's forming below these lows, above these highs. These buys over here. And now let's see the sales below these lows. One, two, three. Okay, that will be, at least will be a win. Following day. 29th, we said we had jobless claims. And yeah, very thin volume, jobless claims coming uh higher than previous one. Uh, so yeah, we might have this readtest, but look at the volume, look at the, yeah, not really convinced in any trade. This might be, yeah, it's already, it's very sketchy. Would it go up into a win? But hmm, quite sketchy, I would say, I would prefer, almost prefer to, to take this further entry. At the break and readtest of these highs. Over here. That will go into a win, and that's it. Very slow volume and approaching the end of the year. With the last day of this huge backtesting session, remember that we started in December, in January. Uh, now the volume is, is looking good, not looking bad, this volume, absolutely. Yeah. This would go. Quite interestingly, I would say. And if I was flexible enough, I would have taken it. Yes, and uh, but let's see now, uh, what, what would I enter? Above these highs, below these lows. Yeah, so I would probably take. This loss. And this win. So yeah, that would be the end of the year. So this is actually end of the. Is this the last one? Is this, this is the last one. This is also the end of this huge backtesting review, as you can see. Done. We did. About 465 items. And uh, we had. Ta ta ta, ta. 110 screenshots, because some of them did not, uh, were not worth a screenshot. I will still need to upload to update the last numbers. From the last few, couple of days, and then we will have the actual win rate, which is, should be around 50% as expected. Hope you guys enjoyed, and wait for the review, for the recap of this session, see you next time.